At this time, I'll call the September 7th, 2017 meeting to order for the County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't have anything to add to the agenda, so I move that the agenda we approved is presented.
Second.
You got the motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our consent agenda includes the minutes of August 31st work session and the regular meeting, also payroll of $263,297.05, wire payments on utilities of $12,109.58.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Craig, we'll start with you for commission comments.
Last Thursday, Janelle and I attended the North Central Region's Planning Commission, and it was in Minneapolis. We had five legislators there. Topics that were discussed was the property tax, which their discussion was nothing can happen with that. There was some discussion, you know, that they thought the legislature was working better together this year than they had in the past. I don't know if that's going to help us any or not, but the feeling is that there's not going to much be happening in the legislature this year. I don't know. I don't know why that's going to be, but it's what will be, will be, I guess. Steve Johnson, did you, you know, he's the old gentleman there on the, I guess, want to say on the...
He's younger than us.
Well, I know, but for those that have been in the legislature...
Yeah, experienced and reelected several times.
Right. You know, well, I'm just waiting to see your, I should say, we, the legislature can just see where, you know, the tax revenues coming in. I guess it was $9 million more than what they, in August. So that's, it's just going to be kind of a, see where the money's at. Wasn't, you know, not to get off subject, but there was some discuss about school finance. The courts would rule against the proposal of the money that was available for the state, so but that's nothing we can do about that. So we talked about a lot of stuff we can't do anything about.
And I know Steve Johnson at one time represented part of Dixon County, and then I think when they redrew some of the lines. But I know that he visited with the KEC board last year and seems to be one that's willing to kind of reach out and also take consideration as far as what's good for counties and municipalities. And he has a finance background, so I think he's a good connection to have there along with some of the others. But he has been there long enough. He has moved up in leadership.
Yeah, Gary, I can't think of his last name. He thinks they just need to do the land use value. They need to redo that. And I think the consensus was that, you know, the way ag land is valued, that the way the legislature is going now, it's 2020 when it comes, it'll be 55% of the people will be from, legislature will be from five counties that it can, you may not want to open because it could be worse than it is now. So that's all I have, man.
Okay, thank you, Laverne.
Yeah, well, last weekend was a busy weekend for a lot of people coming into our towns for celebrations, and I think that went well. I do have a juvenile detention meeting next week, and we are going to be going over to Riley County to have a meeting for this time. So it's always interesting to go somewhere besides the Jackson City to have our meeting. I might, haven't done a farm report for a long time. It's not looking too good. We're just in a real dry cycle, and at my place, we've had, in the last two months, we've had four rains, but they've been not over 20 hundreds apiece, so it didn't add up. It really didn't go very far. And I know the Sling County, they're reporting over eight inches behind for the year, and the fall crops are just kind of getting to the point, it's getting desperate, and like I say, if we can't get rain pretty soon, it's, we're not going to have during the fall harvest that we've been able to have. And so it's, like I say, it's just, moisture is just, pretty much, the crops have used it once moisture has been available, and they've looked, looked good up to this point, but it's just not going to continue if we can't get a decent rain here. So even the weak ground, there's nothing growing on it, and like I say, it's kind of usual. I'm not sure the volunteers even sprouted yet, and so it's just, the dry weather is really starting to have an effect on the, on the crops now. That's all I have.
Okay. Earlier this morning, we had, Chancy Smith was in here, and the county, through his work, kind of worked hand in hand with Trails and Rails, and he told us about, that they had set up some generators and provided power sources and so on, which was just a good partnership with, with a local event like that that involved a lot of people for the Chisholm Trail Sesquicentennial. But, but also, what he was quick to point out, that I think is worth mentioning, is we have that equipment, and we never know when the situation will arise, that that equipment's needed and used. And so this is kind of a, a good test drill to show what the capabilities are and what they need to do. And, and so, you know, it certainly provided a good experience. And, and of course, from all that we've heard initially, the Trails and Rails event was, and Tales was a very successful weekend, and the weather cooperated as far as the coolness factor. We also had the sheriff, the mandar sheriff, in earlier this morning, and just expressing what some of their needs were. And we'll probably take that into consideration on a, a future agenda item to address some of that. And that's pretty much all I have. So at this time, we'll go to, there's no petitions to present, but we do have a proclamation. And so I'll go ahead and read that at this time. The proclamation is, whereas Great Plains Theater is a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit corporation located in Abbling, Kansas, Great Plains Theater is the only professional theater from Kansas City to Denver, whereas Dixon County and the surrounding communities are honored to have a professional theater in our area. Whereas Great Plains Theater contributes to the economic stability of our area by attracting visitors and tourists to our area to enjoy professional productions by being an employer within our community and as a major cultural attraction. Whereas during the period of September 15th through September 24th, Great Plains Theater will be the site of the production of Hillbilly Hot Spot. Hillbilly Hot Spot is a family-style variety show featuring comedy and a blend of original country, western, and hillbilly music, written by singer-songwriter Darlene Austin of Vine Creek Music of Nashville. The show is owned by BDS Productions LLC of Chapman, Kansas. The show is developed locally and will offer licensing rights to the production nationally to theaters, both community and professional. Therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Dixon County, Kansas, does proclaim September 15th through September 14th, 2017, as Hillbilly Hot Spot Week in honor of the Great Plains Theater and Hillbilly Hot Spot.
September 15th through the 24th?
What did I say?
The 14th.
Oh, yes, September 15th through September 24th. Now, I was kind of looking ahead here. I think I'm supposed to say something about y'all come back now here, and I couldn't do it like, so if anyone wants to, has a little more theatrical expression would want to say that, you could make that a motion.
Done an excellent job.
Is there a motion to a second proclamation?
I'll second that motion.
So we have the motion and the second for the proclamation. Any further question or comment? I might say it is something where it is, you know, you have some local attraction like the theater, and it's expressed in this proclamation. There's some economic benefits there, but it's, sounds like it's going to be a good entertainment opportunity for people in this area and surrounding counties. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
It's just two copies. I figured they want one.
Are there any public comments that anyone would want to make at this time? And if so, you'd want to step to the podium and state your name, please, and your address.
Name's Lynn Ryan, 1312 Southwest Second Street, Abbling, Kansas. Proud to be an Ableanian. Last week, we talked, I mentioned about the Justice Center and ways and how we could get the word out really better. I, basically made up, I kind of passed these out for you.
Yes, that's fine.
This is a very, very rough draft. It's nothing complete or anything. Just basically some of my ideas that I've got down on two subjects, the voting ballot and still looking to get them together. First one's the voting ballot. And I don't know anything about voting ballots, how you can arrange them or anything, but that's just my ideas on that. And you guys just, you can just look over and think about it. I'm not asking for any answers at all. The second part is getting the word out. I just quickly looked at my, my Facebook account, and I come up with some figures on how to get, get the word out. And what you put on, on a ad, that says everything. So this is some ideas that you can look at. Then a flyer, or an ad in the, on Facebook or Twitter or both, and/or the newspaper. They want to be so nice to help out the county, paying ads for them. These are some ideas I come up with, some dollar things, I don't count the dollars. But is there any objection to having dollars exposed in something like this?
We're talking about placing the, you getting the word out?
Yes.
We can't do the money. We can't spend it.
No, I mean, can you post it?
We haven't posted.
Yeah, what the cost of being doing it instead.
Yeah.
But I mean, we can't. I don't know.
We've got two Facebook accounts, and we've put all this on throughout the whole thing.
Right.
The county does, and we've put almost daily updates on the Facebook accounts.
That's only when people see them, though. If you post, if you boost, if you boost an ad, that's the actual cost of here for boosting the ad, gets, gets those people. And I did a, did a 35 mile radius of Abbling, and that's what I come up with. And you can do the same thing on your Facebook page, too.
But we have to pay a hundred dollars to do it?
Well, you pay Facebook.
Well, I know, but I...
I'm just really showing some figures.
No, I don't have to do it again.
No, I appreciate this. I mean, but I think what we'll need to do is, is kind of develop a little bit of our product.
Yeah, and then look at the very last, the very last sentence. Take our survey and reply. You mentioned about getting, getting more information about people around, around the area and stuff. And a little ad like this, you can get, you get responses quickly. People will just, are more, the people are more, more likely to hit the button, reply and answer, say yes, no, whatever, then they already talk to you. You can reach more people and get more answers quickly by doing that. That way, you get a good consensus to what's going on in the public. But getting the word out, the right word, the right stuff, this is a way to do it. It's my opinion.
Okay.
So you guys take what you want, think about it, throw it away, whatever, but I'm not, I'm not going to give up on the Justice Center.
Oh, I'm not either.
Well...
Because you guys got to have it.
No, we got to have it, not us.
We all have it.
Yeah.
The county has to have it. That's it.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Any questions you want to ask me, what I come up with or anything?
Well, you know, we, we had come up with just total cost more of what it would cost to renovate from architect, but, you know, we, we've never gotten specific in, in, in just doing certain things as far as the renovation.
Like I said, it's just why it's threw down there. But then the public needs to know what its cost is now to keep this place in business, what's going to cost them per month, per year, and the difference, the savings would be on new, new places, kind of justifying the numbers.
And, and we did get a report from Chancy this morning in our work session, you know, and it's, like I say, the...
It looks pretty bleak to me.
It sounded kind of bleak, because there's just so many things that can go wrong with the old equipment that we've got, that we're working with, and, and the heating and cooling, and like I said...
Well, to me, as a taxpayer, just sitting here listening, someone, it's going to get worse.
Well...
And it's going to escalate to even more dollars.
And I guess the point that needs to be made, you know, we keep fixing things, but it's not a total fix, because we're just fixing old stuff. And it's, you keep, keep putting money into something that you know that's not going to be a total fix, and it's just going to keep...
I know. I'm on your side, believe me. I'm just looking for ways of educating the public.
Well, and like I said, while the public don't look long range, they look at just fixing to get by, and that's, doesn't solve the problem or, or ends up costing more when you, you just keep doing it over and over.
I understand.
And I think right now, probably the voters and taxpayers need a little bit of breather since we've already had the election, and just to get a little bit of time. I, I think it might be something that, and Brad, you might have some ideas you can bring back to us later, just the timeliness of when we might gather some information and, just see if, what kind of timeline and so on. But, but anyway, that's kind of where I...
Well, it's just, just my thoughts and how to educate the public easier, faster, so you can get a, get a better grab of what we're looking at here. So take your worst worth and put your minutes...
Well, thank you for your thoughts and that you put into it, and, and giving us something too to look at, so.
All right.
If there's no other public comments, we'll go ahead with our reports, and Doug isn't going to be here today because he's in court, so Brad, if you'd go ahead and give yours, and if you had anything from Doug to pass on to us, you certainly can.
Well, you've got the year-to-date staffing and budget reports. Staffing reports is every year from the sheriff, and heard from my report in the past, is probably no surprise, we've had some vacancies, terminations that have come up, people that have left, and we dealt with a few of those. We still have a couple of links going on that seem to be an issue that is never-ending, so. On the budget reports, we're, you know, two-thirds of the way through the year, and Janelle said she's not alarmed at anything, the sales tax. I am pleasantly surprised that it's up another several thousand dollars. The June sales tax came in at $104,818, which is about $4,500. It looks like higher than it was in May, so that's, that's good. Things are staying consistent, which I guess will be consistent with the state's report that we heard. And our special sales tax for wooden bridges, of course, that's up as well, $101,499 for, for June, so if it keeps climbing or at least stays consistent, we'll be well within what we've got budgeted, so good, good news there. We, as we discussed in the work session, we did get the final paperwork closed out on the under CS storm cleanup project, so that's done in the books. We sold our old ambulance that we had on Purple Wave. It brought $8,000, which is $3,000 to $4,000 more than what it would typically brought on train yet on the project, so, and only don't give us much for those. And that gentleman was supposed to be here this morning to pick it up.
One thing I thought was interesting about that, too, is that a few people wondered, what is that ambulance? Is some other city just going to pick it up and use it, and actually is a private individual, which kind of tips us off that we'd pretty much used it up.
Yes. Yeah, and we did have one community that inquired early on about it, but they ended up doing, going in a different direction, and this wasn't what they were looking for. And, you know, we do take very good care of our equipment, and as far as shape on a scale of one to 10, I'd say it was probably a nine or 10, which is indicative of how we take care of those things, but it's still a 12-year-old ambulance, or whatever it was, and it still had the miles on it. And you very seldom remember seeing ambulance going from their quarters to a call running very slow. I mean, when you, when you start out, you've got your foot in it, you're getting there in a hurry for obvious reasons, so they get run hard, so. And those are all things that people take into consideration, so when you've got a unit that's been used to the degree it had been used, is it really worth the expenditure and investment, much like courthouses and other things, to invest in an old piece of equipment? So, as you said, it was an individual that purchased it, and for whatever reason, and we've gotten rid of it, so.
That, that was the last one of those smaller units, is that correct?
It was, yeah. Everything we've got now is on the bigger chassis that can be remounted, so.
So I remember Joe and Sheila, we started buying the bigger units back then and trying to replace these smaller units that actually were causing some more maintenance problems because they were, couldn't stand up to the weight that they were carrying.
They couldn't stand up, and they were just too heavy for the, for the box it was on, and we couldn't remount them, so that's an efficiency thing for the futures. We can take the box off and put it on a new chassis, and, for about half the cost of a new ambulance, so. So in planning ahead, that gets rid of all those and gets us into that, into that situation for the future, so hopefully we'll be on money-saving, more efficient way of doing things as we get to a point where the next unit needs to be replaced, so. We had started working with processing the annual inspection paperwork on the five fracture critical bridges we have. It's our intent to go ahead and utilize and negotiate and utilize the same inspector, which is law beaten, that's done it for the last several years for us. They give us an extremely competitive price, probably because they're already familiar with all five bridges, and it's much easier for them to go out and do it. So we have to have that done, and the deadline is around the first of the year, but we're working with them to get that set up and get those completed. And as you're aware, those are, like I say, they're an annual inspection, and have to be done on those five fracture critical bridges. So we're looking, cost-wise, we're looking at around $8,000, $8,000 to $9,000 for all five of them, so. Some of them, depending on their, their design and the way they are, are much more than the others. They're, they come at different prices, but that's the total cost of what it is, so. We are told, as of yesterday, that APAC is scheduled to be here next week to do the overlay on 2200 Avenue from Enterprise to Highway 43. We also have Martin As a painter scheduled for the following week to come in and do the white, the white ball lines on the roads that haven't been done and finish up the other yellow stripes. APAC's also supposed to be here very quickly and do the shoulder in on Old Forty, and then they'll do the shoulder in on 2200 Avenue as well, so. Our guys are done with asphalt this year. They put the machine away, and they're going on to doing bridge and culvert projects, so we're also continuing to mow, which is, as you heard in the work sessions, a challenge, keeping the mowers running, not the tractors, but the mowers themselves, so. One of those is operating today, and we'll probably have it operating tomorrow on overtime. This is the last week of the, of the crew's four hour, four 10-hour days, so it'll go back to eight-hour days next week, so. But we'll take advantage of trying to get somebody to mow tomorrow because we're kind of behind on that. I know the crops haven't grown, and it's been awful dry, but the weeds should find the moisture, so.
The grass, like I say, it's heading out now, so it's sticking up taller than it was, and...
Yep, and it's been tough to keep up with, but it is that time of year, so. We have sent out the RFP on the mowing tractors and the, and the mowers, and we've got till the middle of next month, so the vendors need to get that back, and then we'll evaluate that and come back to you with some options, so. And then the last thing, I think Janelle had reported to you last week, but she did get the RFP out for the, the county audit for next, next year. And if there's any companies that are interested to do, we know it's the audits, we're certainly interested in them contacting us and make sure that we get them a copy of the qualifications and the information so they can submit the, their proposals, so. And that's, I guess, about all I've got. We've got Michael Hook will be here next week, and I talked to him after Farmhouse Tuesday, and he said he'd be ready by next week. He'd like to come in and give you an update on how last weekend went. Seemed to be very pleased, and probably a little bit tired, that understandably, been a lot of work on it, took on his behalf, but he'll be here next week to give you an update on that and give you a brief on, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, did we skip, or are we going to discuss the next regional meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to do that last, and I guess I forgot it. Yeah, we're due, we agreed to host the next regional meeting, and I had that on my calendar to get that, get with you and get that scheduled here. And I was just looking at the calendar. I didn't know that October 17th would, would work for you guys. That would give us enough time to get the word out, get a place to carry, get the word out.
What day of the week does that fall on?
That's on a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah. And I don't know what your thoughts are as far as the venue, but, you know, the easiest, and I mean, maybe do it right at the farmhouse in their back room. I think it would be big enough.
Yeah.
That'd probably be the least expensive as far as a meal, not have to have somebody extra here on site or something, but, and I can check with the farmhouse and see if they, if they would be available. I think their back room will be able to meet with it. I mean, yeah, they have...
Yeah, that's, yeah...
I have my clerk's meeting.
I'm not sure what...
We have a clerk's meeting there.
What the capacity that room is, but I think it would be...
I know with Rotary and everything there, they seem to pack quite a few in there, so...
Would, I don't usually, they can easily handle 50, probably would have fewer than that.
Yeah, I guess we probably have 35 to 40 typically, don't we?
Well, we'd have probably the best turnout because we are the center of the, you know, of the counties and stuff, and anywhere else we want to invite, you know, some of our outsiders and...
They've invited extra counties from when we first started that process. It kind of grew, added some more counties. We were just, had the surrounding counties around us to start with, but now it's...
Lincoln and some of the others have kind of come in.
Well, unless we invited them, they're not going to count.
That's true.
Well, that's what I wondered, you know, how far out we was going to go.
Up to you guys.
But it seemed like McPherson had enacted...
And they are a mortar horse, so, yeah.
And actually, the McPherson one was one of the most helpful presentations that we've had from other counties, because they basically kind of laid out their playbook, if this is what we have done economically and on the development side, and...
Kind of a good example.
But anyway, we, we gathered some good information.
Yeah, they, they've been able to draw industries to come in there and...
Kind of center bar eye.
But it's a, you know, cultivating that regional concept.
Well, if you, if that sounds okay to you, then start working on it.
Yeah.
Get it set up, so, get the invitation set out, so.
Okay, notices and communications. We received a few magazines governing and also buying power regarding government technology, so these are available for review. And that's all I have, unless anybody else received any notices or letters or communications. There are no resolutions, no other business, so I guess we could entertain...
Some who?
Motion for adjournment, some who by Craig, second by Laverne?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned. Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.